I guess we can start. Welcome, welcome to the First East Ridge Middle School Town Hall Virtual Meeting. And I want, I want to say that we miss you. We have few people here, but that's okay, that's okay. And because I believe they're, they keep coming in, we have someone in the waiting room right now. But I want to welcome you to the re-entry Town Hall meeting. And I know that there are so many questions and so many concerns. And we have a panel here to hopefully answer most of those questions. And if the questions that we don't know, we will carry them to maybe to someone that can answer the questions. There will be some that, that won't be answered right now, but we're working on it. We're doing our best. Okay, we're going to start off, I want to make introductions first. I'm Kristy Drake Principal at East Ridge Middle School. And then we also have Tom Arnold. He's one of our Assistant Principals here at East Ridge Middle School. Tom, can you wave your hand? And then we also have Laura Hamilton. She's also an Assistant Principal at East Ridge Middle School. And then we have Alex Oliver. He is Dean of Students and the A.D. here, Athletic Director here at East Ridge Middle School. Then we have Kelly Owen. She is our Lead School Counselor here at East Ridge Middle School. We have Danielle Hooper. She is our IT Lead here at East Ridge Middle School. And then we have our special, special guest, Ms. Marie Rivera. She is here for all our Spanish speakers. So if there are any questions from anyone that, that does not speak English, understand English, but does speak Spanish, because she is our Spanish interpreter. She is here for you. Now, thank you all for coming again. Now, if we can put the presentation up and get it going, so we can get on out of here. Okay, I made the introductions. You know who we are, so we can keep it moving. Okay, through this whole strange, I don't know what to really call this. This is a pandemic unprecedented time. We have used as our theme, grace. I know I need it. We all could use some grace, allowing parents, teachers, students to have choice and fluidity. I've been, when I explained what this year looks like, I've said, get on the roller coaster. Just jump on the roller coaster. But when you get on it, have the expectation of I'm going to enjoy this ride. The mindset, I'm going to enjoy the ride because it will be a roller coaster. So you might as well, you might as well enjoy the ride. So with grace, choice, and fluidity, let's look at 2020-21 school year. Next. Okay, I'm going to move this up the way so we can keep moving. Okay, these are unprecedented times. Now, as you remember, our schools closed March 13th, 2020. And at that time, I said, oh y'all, we'll be back in a couple of weeks. We're coming back. Well, it didn't turn out like I thought it did. And I think a lot of us, like, I didn't realize that we'll be back after spring break. Well, we weren't, we didn't come back. Well, we're going to come back in May, but we didn't come back. Things changed, the world changed. I've never seen anything like this. Anybody living right now, I don't think they have seen anything that looks like this. It's almost reminds me of the Jetsons. That takes me back and that dates me. But it's a strange time, but we're going to get through it. This is not easy. We have to adjust to a new normal. There may not be a vaccine right now, but I keep hearing on the news, they're developing a vaccine. It will be coming soon and may be here in the beginning of the year. But before that, we do have to adjust. We have to be safe and we have to equip ourselves so we can keep moving forward. We are not going to stay still. This is not a stop sign. We must find ways to serve our mission as we protect the health and our community, students, and staff. Now, we want your feedback. And that, that is what you're going to do in the chat box. Please place your questions. And Ms. Rivera, she's here. Can you access that chat box? Can you see that, the chat box? So also, if you may see some questions, you can, can answer as well. But please place your questions in the chat box. You can also, you can email us. You can reach us. We'll send out all our email addresses so you can get in contact with us. We do have a website, erms.hcd.org. You can access us through the website as well with all your questions and concerns. And we will work through this together. And we do have experts, medical experts, because we are not. Now, we do consult with the medical experts locally. And then, of course, we have the persons that are consulted on a national basis. There's no playbook for this. It's being written every day. It's like a draft and we go in and we change this because something else has changed. And it's, you're editing every day. So it's a roller coaster. Enjoy the ride. Please be patient and always, I know it's tough, I know it's tough, but be kind. Next. Okay, unless you're a hermit and unless you don't come out your house, you don't get on your cell, you don't look at TV, you don't come into contact with anyone if you don't know about what's going on. Okay, with COVID-19, it has, it has done its damage. Can we have enough of it? We're sick of it. It has totally just disrupted lives. It has, in the United States, there have been 3,355,457 total cases in the United States and 135,235 total deaths. That's devastating. Okay, and in Tennessee, same thing. It has, we have had 65,274 cases, total cases in Tennessee, and 749 total deaths. Now, locally in Hamilton County, we have had 3,684 total cases and 38 total deaths. Now, that is, that was the data from July 14th. That has changed some, not that much, but it has changed. Next. Okay, in all this with COVID-19 locally here, Hamilton County has done an awesome job in, in moving forward and getting us ready to begin this new year. They have gotten together and organized a task force. It consists of Ted Fogelman, Colonel Brooks, I believe, two principals, parents, but the community of Hamilton County to have their input, their expertise. And they have written, developed a re-entry plan. And it covers everything from the procedures, protocols, safety in the re-entry of the school, the academics, the phases, how we will re-enter school. We have it posted on Facebook. It's on hcd.org. I've sent it out to all the people that are in my power school, their addresses, text messages. And if you have not received anything from me, please email me. Please email me with your name, address, excuse me, email address, cell phone number, your child's name, and their grade, if you haven't received anything from me. Because I'm pushing information out weekly. So please get in contact with me. Okay, next. Okay, as I said before, the task force was organized. May 12th to announce task force formation. And if you look on here, it discusses the operations plan, the academic plan, the support plan, communication plan, and the health and safety. Okay, next. Okay, the booklet is thick, the packet, because it covers everything. I mean, it doesn't miss a thing. Now, there are some, I should say, the things that are missed are what is, what the United States, we don't know. Nobody knows, okay? But it's a plan that keeps you moving forward if you follow the plan. It is the plan. And so that is what we are going to follow to move forward, not backwards, forward. There may be some things you don't like. How we're moving forward, but it is moving forward. It's just an adjustment. It's, it's change and because we're keeping it moving. And reopening plan, it's a health and safety plan, academic plan, whole child support plan. We know there's some concerns, some worries, some anxiety. We're not used to this. We're social people. And to be cooped up at home and living in a world with a virus, virus going around and it's, it's making us sick, it's killing people, it's, it can be scary. But there, we have counselors here that will help support you, to counsel you, to, to give you comfort, to, to face and help you deal with those challenges and those worries. Also, the operations plan, it discusses the transportation that we have for you coming into school. We're still working on it, but you will know soon what that will be. School nutrition, we're going to still feed you every day. If, when we are in this building, students will get a, will get breakfast and lunch. And the students who decide to stay at home, HCS, HCS at home, they will get a lunch every day. They will get it delivered to them. So you will have lunch every day. You will have a meal every day. Extracurricular activities, they will change, okay? As we move from phase to phase, those things will change. You'll hear more about the athletic activities from our A.D. Childcare, we're just listening to a meeting that the superintendent was in and he was talking about childcare. There's childcare available, like the before and after school, there is childcare available. And there are about 35 sites with before and after school. Now, they are trying to get other sites for childcare for parents. They have not worked out all the details. There are some that are now out there. You can go to their website, I believe, to get that information concerning childcare. And also, communication plan. Oh my goodness. We communicate, communicate, communicate. And we need to. As a family, we're family, like I have a family. Don't go in your rooms and be by yourself, okay? Come on, come on out the room and we're going to talk about it. Call us, email, because that is what we're going to do for you. We're going to send emails. We're going, like right now, we're going to have Zoom meetings. We're going to communicate. We're not hiding anything. We want you to know. That is how we're going to move it, keep the ball rolling, keep it moving forward. Okay, professional development, our teachers, administrators, we are constantly getting professional development. It's different now, I mean, with Zoom meetings, but we're learning, continuously learning. We all are. Next. Now, you were sent a survey back in June, and we had pretty good participation. We had five students to participate and it was just about if, what type, if you were coming back in person or if you wanted to be HCS at home. And if, and this was like preliminary. And we had parents, we had 160 parents to participate and five students to participate. Next. Here's to break down. Okay, we had 42.4% to say they wanted option one. And option one is you're going to come to school. If we were in phase three or four, that means five days a week. There was 44.8% that were going to be HCS at home. And that would mean that you would be connected to us, still connected, but connected at home. You would have your teachers here at East Ridge Middle School. You will still be able to play sports. You will still be a part of extracurricular activities here at school, but you would do your learning at home. Okay, that was 44.8%. And option three, Hamilton County Virtual Schools, which you really don't want to do because you are disconnected. That is 12.7%, okay? Next. Phases and gating criteria. Okay, I'm going to explain this and then I'm going to break off to Marie. And I want you to explain this after I talk about it. Okay, the phases, phases one, two, three, four, okay? Okay, phase one is the risk of spreading COVID-19 is very significant. Now, if we're going to be in phase one, if you're going to be in phase one, that would mean that the schools are all closed, okay? All closed, that's remote learning. And that's when you have very high COVID cases. I'm talking up maybe 2,500 or more cases that you would be in phase one. Okay, now, phase two. Phase two, I will say, we are in a transition state with phase two right now. I believe today we were at 1,588 cases today. And the beginning, I'm not sure, it's like 1,400 or it's right in that range. We'll go to a next screen and you will see. But we're in a transition with phase two that has not been announced. The superintendent has not said, we are coming to school. And in phase two, no, he hasn't. And he will not say it until August 5th. So we will not know. I won't know. Nobody will know. We'll know though, August 5th. And that phase two is the risk of spreading COVID-19 is moderate, but increasing. It requires moderate mitigation. That means that we're looking at AB schedules, AB schedules. That means your, your child will come here twice a week. Now, IT students, that may be three days a week. And ESL students, that may be three days a week. But it will be reduced times on campus. Say, A-Day may come on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday will be that virtual day. Everybody's virtual. And possibly to meet the needs of our IT students, they may come in on Wednesday. And also, our ESL students may come on Wednesday. We haven't gotten that scheduled because everyone needs to register. Everyone needs to register so we can get our numbers. So phase two involves hybrid learning, reduced days on campus at all schools. Phase three, phase three, risk of spreading COVID-19 is minimal, okay? Phase three is, is a phase that kind of concerns me in that, that means all students, well, students that choose to come here will come here five days, okay? And we are right now filled to capacity. We will do all we can to keep everyone safe. We will follow CDC guidelines. We will do, we will wear the mask, keep them on. We will just follow all the procedures to keep everyone safe. Now, when you have a class that has 25 to 30 students in it, it's difficult to practice social distancing. We'll try the best we can. We'll do, I mean, we're doing lunches inside the classroom. We do not go to the cafeteria. If line up classes one at a time in the hall, so many people can go into the restroom at a time. But we will, it will be tight. It will be hard. But if we want to stay in school, we have to follow those guidelines tightly. We cannot deviate from any of those guidelines. We have to follow them tightly and it will, because yes, we are filled to capacity here at East Ridge Middle School. Schools are open and there would be some on remote learning. There would be some hybrid because there will be some HCS at home. Right now, we're in a transition because the cases are, are like in that transitional stage. I will show you that screen next. Now, phase four, we're back to normal, nothing to worry about. But right now, we are, we're in a transition. It hasn't been announced because anything could happen between now and August 5th. We could have cases to go up, we can have cases to go down. So an announcement will not be made until August 5th. Okay, next. All right, this is the screen I want to show you. Okay, looking at the phases today, we had active cases, active. People are sick, they're testing positive, they're in the hospital, ICU at home. But they are active cases, they're 1,588. Now, if you look at the gating criteria, transitioning from phase three to phase two. Now, if you look at that, I have to minimize this. The, the transitioning range is 1,470 to 1,840, okay? We're right in the middle. We're right there, 1,588. So looking at, looking at it, yeah, we will be like phase two, but okay. The superintendent will make an announcement August 5th because you just never know. If we are down, woo, what, 1,200 August 5th or 500, then that's, we're phase more looking at phase three. But right now, we are in transition stage, okay? And looking at phase two to phase one, the numbers are big. And 2,570 to 2,940, going to phase one. And phase one is purely at home. It is virtual. But we, it will be everybody that will pretty much be the HCS at home. We will be teaching your children virtually. But right now, we are in numbers, transitioning with, and looking at phase two. All right, next. Okay, right now, I don't know if you've gone to the Health Department, the Hamilton County Health Department page. There's a page you can go to daily and you can hit it around maybe 4, 4:15. It will give you an update and you have to, it's down just a little bit. It's not at the very top of the page. But then you will go down and you will see case status. And right there, it will say number of active cases. And that is what we're looking at. And that is July 21st, 2020, that we see active cases. There's a link you can go to, and I believe I've sent that link to you, but I can send it again. And you can, I mean, you can have all the information that you need. You can, you can stay up to date. Next. Okay, the task force, they have also developed a health and safety plan. Next. Okay, the safety pledge. And pretty much that is all of us, it's like, it's, I don't know if you've heard, the honor system. Okay? If you're sick, stay home. Wake up, you, you got a sore throat, runny nose, a fever, stay at home. Stay at home because we don't know, we have no idea what it may mean. It could be, I mean, just allergies. It could be a sinus infection. It could be a little stomach virus. It could be strep. We don't know. But stay at home to be safe because right now, we're using grace. Now, it's not like we did the last nine weeks where pretty much, okay, the best you can and you just graze. We, we, it was like we were giving you extra credit for your effort, for effort, but you weren't penalized. Now, you are getting grades and it's, yes, we love effort. But we're looking at what you do, your work, and we are grading you, okay? Now, but the only thing, if you are sick, it's a lot of times, you know, you're sick, but you can still do work. That's when you are HCS at home. You work remotely for that day or two days or three days if you're not feeling well. And the state has said that we can count that day for attendance if you are working. But you must be working. You must turn in work. Your teacher must see you on that Zoom meeting. You must make contact with your teacher and show that you are working if you're not feeling well. But we do ask you to stay at home if you are sick. Avoid getting close to others, even when you're here at school. I know you, you miss your friends, you want to see them, but this too shall pass. It won't be like this forever. It's just only for a time period. Also, face coverings, they are a must. They are a must. They're a part of the dress code. They are required. July 10th, Mayor Corringer required mask to be worn by everyone. I believe it was from 11 to 11 on up, okay? But with Hamilton County, if you, I believe, help me out with this, Tom. If it's second grade, second grade up until, I guess, 12th grade, it is required. You are required to have a mask or some kind of covering that covers your nose and your mouth that doesn't open up, okay? But you must have a covering over your nose and your mouth. It was required. It is required here. And if you do not have a mask or a covering that is approved by us, we will give you one. We would be so happy to give you one. And if you, if for some reason, you just, I don't know, don't want to wear it, it is best for you to go to HCS at home. We'll be happy to accommodate you. And then, as you know, everyone should wash their hands and sanitize surfaces. Wash, wash, wash your hands and just use, I mean, you know, things that you, I mean, you know to do and you do, I know you do. Now, Ms. Rivera, I know I talked far too much. Yes, I think, when is she going to stop? Can you kind of cover real quick what I just said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, para todos nuestros padres hispanos, básicamente la señora Drake nos abrió primeramente de las fases que tiene la escuela. Si usted opta por la opción uno de regresar a la escuela, son cuatro fases. Donde la primera es cuando tenemos los casos extremos de COVID y los niños no pueden ir a la escuela. La enseñanza será virtualmente y todo el soporte se le dará al estudiante digitalmente y virtualmente. La fase tres es cuando está medio alto, la enseñanza será lo que le llaman híbrida. El estudiante puede ir a la escuela. El estudiante puede ir a la escuela dos o tres días a la semana dependiendo del caso del estudiante que sea. Podemos tener estudiantes teniendo dos días a la semana a la escuela y tres desde la casa. O sea, sería una combinación entre enseñanza en la escuela y enseñanza virtual. La fase eh, tres es que hay un mínimo mientras haya menos casos eh, de coronavirus y vayan subiendo las fases, las escuelas van a abrir más días. O sea que en una fase tres podemos tener una combinación híbrida de tres días en las escuelas y dos virtuales. Habrán centros a- abiertos para recibir los más días y habrán centros que utilizarán menos días. Y en una fase cuatro, que es la que queremos llegar todos, este, es cuando todas las escuelas están abiertas. Esa fue la primera parte que ella nos cubrió. La segunda parte que ella nos cubri- cubrió fue eh, la importancia de seguir todas las reglas del Departamento de Salud del Condado de Hamilton. En estos momentos tenemos una orden en nuestro Condado de Hamilton que todo el mundo debe de utilizar mascarilla para entrar a sitios públicos. Esto incluye la escuela. O sea, que si usted, oh, eh, el niño va a venir a la escuela, el niño tiene que utilizar la mascarilla todo el tiempo que se encuentra en la escuela. Tenemos que seguir la segunda regla que nos dice el Departamento de Salud que es de mantenernos seis pies alejados unos a otros. Las escuelas están preparando este momento y está todo rotulado bien para enseñarle a nuestros estudiantes cuál es la distancia de seis pies entre uno y el otro estudiante para así poder cumplir con todas las reglas que el Departamento de Salud del Condado de Hamilton nos requiere ya que son muy y extrema importancia, tanto para nosotros como para nuestros hijos, para la seguridad de todos. Así que eh, tanto eh, el sanitar todo, el us- el lavarse las manos, eh, u- utilizar de vez en cuando el hand sanitizer, el desinfectador de manos. Eh, son cosas que eh, la, el Departamento de Salud no ha dicho que necesitamos hacer. Se están haciendo actualmente y se seguirán incorporando para una vez más el bienestar y la seguridad del estudiante, del maestro y de todo el personal.
Thank you. Now, I do see a question concerning uh, so if you're sick, can you log into a virtual classroom to keep learning so you don't miss class? Because you have, say, a runny nose and you just pretty much don't know what that runny nose is coming from. I don't know if, say, if your, your child, um, when that season, what is it that comes out in the fall, um, the allergy um, that you get in the fall and you pretty much know this may be something else. Yes, keep them, keep your child at home. Communicate um, that your child is not coming to school. And that's when we will get busy and connect with um, your child virtually. Okay, but as soon as you know, we must keep the lines of communication open. It is so important. It is so important that you do that. But yes, um, your child does have that opportunity. We're gonna be flexible um, when it comes to attendance, but you have to show that um, your child is working and getting their work done. And, and it won't be counted as an absence. Okay, we're gonna keep going with the slides for now. Okay, now, I'm looking at, get this out the way, um, phase two and three, schools are on a reduced schedule or open with a short-term closures in some buildings. Um, risk of spreading COVID nineteen is minimal to moderate. Okay, looking at phase two and three, schools are reduced on a reschedule. Now, say for instance, if um, it's, say, it's just, eh, say, East Ridge Middle School. And there is, and we, um, say if we were in phase three or no, phase, I will say phase two, and something just happened. Um, we had a case of COVID. We possibly, we would close um, the school for forty-eight hours um, to sanitize and to also track um, where the pattern, if they were in this class and see all the students that were in that class, if they need to quarantine, if they need to test. But to, to find out where um, that student went. Um, but first, we need to investigate that. But that doesn't mean all of Hamilton County schools will close. If this was a school, if this was Sadi Daisy, if this was East Hamilton, that's what they would do. That doesn't mean East Ridge Middle School would close. But um, now, when the numbers get really high countywide, that is when you have um, the whole county going to a different stage. But you are fine and, and you will see that some schools may close um, for two or three days. Okay, you will see that um, across Hamilton County. All students and staff are required to wear a face mask. Yes, all of us are. Accommodations is needed for students with special needs and other medically necessary reasons will be accommodated. Um, if you have a five oh four, um, you need to uh, get in contact with Ms. Owen. She is our five oh four coordinator. She is the person that you need to speak with. Um, but with looking at the mask and the, I believe it's the gaiters, is, if, if that's what you, um, I'm not sure what you call them. But they're like the scars that have, um, they, they go around your neck and around, they're not as tight as the mask, but they do fit and they don't fall off. Okay? Um, that may be something better for maybe, say, a asthmatic. I, I don't know what the condition is, but it, but you need to be covered. We need to keep everyone safe, everyone safe. It is recommended, but not required that K-two students wear masks in the classroom. We don't have any K-two students. We have six through eight. As long as they're in a cohort with that same group of students, okay? You must wear your mask. Masks are always required when in the building outside the classroom for all students and staff, even for K-two students. Okay, there would be times when you're, we're outside, there would be a break and, and we're spread out. Okay, they can have a mask break, but when they're in the classroom, especially in phase three now, you, you won't see too many mask break. You won't see a mask break. But if we have space in face, phase two, if we have space, it just depends, then there may, there may, there may be a mask break. Um, but we have to keep it tight to keep it, to keep us all safe and to keep us going to school. Each school will provide um, safe space and time during the school day for students to remove masks. Hamilton County Government has issued a face mask requirement for all public spaces effective Friday. This was Friday, July tenth. Okay, next slide. Okay. Okay, this school opening, reopening task force academic plan. Said before this uh, task force did an awesome job. And we um, have talked about this, what phase one looks like. Phase one is when all schools are closed and it's remote, remote learning only. This is um, this was March thirteenth, but we have a great plan and um, teachers are really on top of it. Administrators are really on top of it. Um, ready, if, if that happens, we're ready for it. Phase two, reduce days on campus at all schools. Right now, we're trend, in a transition in phase two, looking at the numbers of the active COVID cases. We are looking at phase two. It hasn't been announced. I, no, Kristy Drake did not say we are in phase two and that we're gonna be at phase two on August fifth. Now, the only person that can decide that will be the superintendent. Cause the numbers could decrease, which I'm hoping they will. We could be in phase three. But right now, looking at the numbers, it, it would look like something like phase two. Okay, that is reduced days on campus, um, at all schools, looking at a A-B schedule. Looking at something like um, students that are on um, A would maybe come on Monday and Tuesday, virtual day Wednesday and on B, um, B students would come on Thursday and Friday. Okay, everybody will go to school, will still attend school every single day, but it would be a different form of learning. It would be remote um, learning on some days, virtual and then in person. But you will be going to school every single day, five days a week. Um, we can keep moving. Okay, looking at this, this is a uh, visual of phase two. And if we were split into cohorts, um, A-B schedule. Okay, if you, your child was on um, A, they would come to school Monday and Tuesday. Okay, and they would get in-person um, teaching. Now, that is the person that chose option one. Now, if you were option two, HCS at home, you will still, I mean, you will be HCS at home, but you will connect with your school. If you were option three, I have no idea, okay, because you're not connected to us, okay? Um, looking at on Wednesday, everyone will be virtual, everyone. Um, with the exception, we don't know yet, with the um, exceptional education students, uh, we may have um, some students to come on Wednesday and then also with the ESL students. And then looking on, if you were in cohort B, you would, um, your day to come in person would be on Thursday and Friday. To come, if you were option one, you would come to school on Thursday and Friday. But if you are student cohort A and B, now listen, you are learning every single day. Every single day. Five days a week. Okay, next. Okay, HCS at home, what does that look like? What, what, I mean, I mean, what is my, what is my child gonna be doing? Okay, let's look at it. Connected to zone, yes, you are. You're three seven four one two. We possibly may have some students on three seven four eleven. Um, and you chose option two, that's HCS at home. Uh, you are connected to East Ridge Middle School. You're connected to your teachers. With method to this, if you want to play basketball, that's if we're playing basketball. You can still play basketball. You can play soccer. You can play um, track. You can run track. Um, you can play volleyball, okay? And you can still um, be learning at home. But you can still come to school and practice and play the games here at the school if you are HCS at home. Now, if you're Hamilton County at home, no, you can't. You're not connected to East Ridge Middle School. I would not advise Hamilton County Virtual School, okay? Um, school creates daily learning schedule for student to follow. HCS at home, yes, we do. Um, Hamilton County Virtual School, no, we, we do not. You're disconnected. You're, you're with um, um, another uh, group of people um, that Hamilton County has placed all virtual students. And if you know anything about the program Edgenuity, that is what, um, I believe, not sure, but what Hamilton County Virtual School looks like, Edgenuity, okay? Um, offers wide range of AP, that's not us, that is high school. Assigned to a homeroom teacher, yes. HCS at home, you will be assigned a homeroom teacher. You will connect with um, a homeroom teacher. You will connect, you will, students, you will connect with your school. You, you will connect. You are still here at school um, remotely, okay? Um, Hamilton County Virtual School, you're not, okay? Curriculum pace same as in-person learning, yes, you are. Say for instance, you are HCS at home, um, and all of a sudden COVID goes away and we are in phase four. That means we're back to normal. You have been in line with everything we do here at East Ridge Middle School, so you won't miss a beat. Okay, you can step right in here and you, I mean, you just keep it moving. We're in phase four, you, you don't miss it. Um, if, if we're in phase four and everybody can come back. So, you are pacing right along the same time as the students that are here. Okay, utilizes all district platforms and tools. Yes, you will do the same thing. You will Google Classroom, um, Canvas, NearPods. Um, you would do, uh, what are these, ISL already, the same things that, um, if you were here. See, next. Okay, um, this is fluid situation. It is data-driven, very much data-driven. We are looking at the data. Uh, we're just not, oh, by the way, we, I guess we're gonna be in phase two or phase three. No, we're looking at numbers. We're looking at data. Uh, we are working on advanced cleaning for high-touch areas and we're disinfecting. We're cleaning house here, um, to keep all the germs out, to keep it, I'm trying to keep, uh, keep us in school. Um, and that's, that's how we have to do it. We, we want to be in school, but we have to uh, kick it up a whole lot. Um, so advanced cleaning, high-touch areas and disinfection and misting. We are working on a process procedure for the positive cases and symptomatic students following CDC guidance for contact tracing. Okay, and that pretty much means that, like I said, we gotta keep it tight. Um, students like, say, they're getting off the bus. They're not gonna sit down in the cafeteria, um, go to the gym. No, they will go in, go to the cafeteria, get their breakfast, go straight to their class and eat their breakfast. They will stay with that group the entire day. Because if um, someone say gets sick in that class and they have COVID, we can trace it. We can't trace it. If they went to the gym, everybody goes to the gym at the beginning of school. Everybody goes to the caf- everybody goes to the cafeteria. So, everybody pretty much in your group, you will stay together. You will go to line up in the hallways um, with a class. It's, it's gonna kinda look like um, elementary. Um, you know how the classes, you all line up together. Um, and say, three at a time, you go in the restroom, you take care of your business, you come on out. Three more go in there and then everybody lines up and you go right back to class. We have to keep it tight. So, we don't have to, I mean, just totally just shut it down. We wanna stay it in school. So, we have to keep things very tight so we can trace just in case there is a COVID case. Um, if you select on campus with, uh, on campus with phases and the circumstances change, you may opt into HCS at home later in semester. Say for instance, you chose, you registered, which registration ends um, tomorrow at eleven fifty-nine PM, July twenty-second, get your registration in. Um, if you opt for option one, get this right, option one, that means you're here in school. Um, you, you're here. Now, in phase two, you will come here um, twice a week, okay? Phase three, five days a week, okay? But you will be here. But when you get here, you're not comfortable or you, you have some concerns. There's some worries and, you know, in phase three, you, you're looking at, hmm, it's a lot of people here in phase three now. It's still, you know, it's, it's not too much social distancing I can do with twenty-five students in the classroom. I'm kind, kinda uncomfortable or if there is someone in your household that has a, a compromising immune, a compromised immune system. Um, or you have an elderly person in your- Um, or you have an elderly person in your home, um you may want to look at. Um I'm looking at, I wanna look at H C S at home, you can do that. You can go from option one to option two. You can go from um here in person at school to H C S at home. Now, what you can't do is go from H C S at home to coming back to school. You you can't, you can't do that, now you can do it after a semester, you can do that. Now, with virtual school, mm-mm, you have to wait a whole year, okay? So, once you opt into H C S at home. Um the student must remain for the duration of the semester. Um because, I mean, that throws all the numbers off, um it 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 just does. Now, there, we will work with you. If your child is sick, that's that's different, I mean, one or two days, okay? They're gonna work remotely from home, with communication, we can do that. That's not a problem, okay? Um children in H C S at home will be prioritized just as on-campus students. We value you just as much, okay, as the students that are in person, okay? Uh so, yes, so don't feel that your child is not getting the quality of education if they are at um H C S at home. Do not think that, uh no, they they are, because they would be connected. Um and say for instance, well, um I don't feel comfortable, but you know, I I would like my child to play softball. Because they really enjoy softball, or really, you know, they they like track. Uh they can, they are, they are allowed to, um they can do that, next slide. Okay, we will providing each teacher with a P P E kit, this is like a safety kit. It's cleaners, barriers, dividers, dispensers, okay? Uh we will provide masks for students that do not have them. Um there is funding that we do, we can, we can have masks, now we don't have them, but you know. It's like, oh, I forgot my mask, okay, we have a mask. Um and they are middle school, it's not like they are in elementary. And you know, they're throwing them everywhere and I mean, there's, they're, they're at the age where they're mature enough. They can uh put a mask in their pocket. Uh but there will be times that um, yes, yeah, they may forget it, okay? Um August twelfth through fourteenth, um that is the first day for students. Um we're looking at those days for orientation days, and they will be phasing days. Even if we were in phase three, those days will be phasing days. That means they will be A B days. We're looking at maybe the first day, the A students will come in. Then on the second day, B students would come in, in the third, third day would be uh a virtual day, a planning day, okay? Um and then, yes, Wednesday is, we're looking at it again, July eighth through Wednesday, July twenty-second. Registration, if you have not registered, please, please register. If you know parents that are out there and they have not registered, please um tell them to register. Get in contact with us if you need help. Um yes, please register, the deadline is tomorrow, eleven fifty-nine P M. Please sign up, please sign up, one or two, one or two, okay? Um, you can move on, next, please. Okay, now we have um Ms. Hooper, she is our exceptional education lead, she will um discuss exceptional education, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Drake, um Ms. Hamilton, would you go ahead, please? Okay, so um I'm gonna kinda start from a phase four for option one. Option one being us um in school. And option four is like it was before March happened. Uh all the kids were getting services, um everyone was happy. And then sadly, uh we had to make some changes. If we have to go to a phase three, um the building's open, kids are in school, we're wearing. Uh thank you, we're wearing masks, uh services are provided uh according to students' I E Ps. And um if we have a student that, let's say, for example, were to choose option two. In this phase, we would, you know, that uh student could get uh services virtually or remotely. A phase two, which is our A days and our B days with that Wednesday day in between. Um for our students who are getting the most intensive services. They will be given an option of a four-point-five-day week, which would be, which would allow those students. And we're talking about students that receive very intensive services, services in excess of three or four hours a day. Um those students would be able to um with an I E P team meeting. Because everything we do in exceptional ed has to be done via I E P team meeting. With an I E P team meeting, that student has the option to attend classes four and a half days a week. That half-day being on that Wednesday. Now, that is again only for our most uh service-intensive students. The majority of our students um that we serve in inclusion will be served in inclusion on their A days. Or their B days, depending which cohort they're assigned to. So they will receive their services when they are at school. If we find that uh the student may need a, or a extra service day or. Uh to meet the service times per the I E P, we do have that Wednesday half-day um that we can also use. Additionally, if you are doing option two H C S at home. Uh that would be a day that if the, if we couldn't reach something via remote um services. You can make an appointment with uh X Ed teachers to come in and get services. Um and then, of course, phase one, that's how we were before. I wanna let everybody know that we did uh get a lot of uh professional development to help us, to help our students. And so we know our students very well, you know, just spending a couple of days with them. That I've met new students during the REACH program, um I see what their needs are and you know, it's it's. I I have to say, uh virtual, remote services are difficult because our kids are so hands-on. And um but we have received uh P D for that and hopefully we can deliver those services as needed. Uh but just keep in mind that everything in X Ed is fluid, everything in X Ed is individualized. That's that I in I E P individualized. So um we, you know, we will have um a little leeway with uh providing services and meeting parents' needs. In these different phases of learning that we're doing. Um Ms. Hamilton, next slide. Now, these are for students that are getting, if you're in option two, which is H C S in home, okay? Um your X Ed services and related services, so as I said before, X Ed services. If we're in phase one, we're closed, you're getting those remotely. Also, just to mention for students on homebound. Um if we are closed, homebound students, that will be remotely as well. Uh there is discussion on phase two for homebound, whether or not those services would be remote or provided in the home. Um there's just a lot of issues when it comes to um a a student who's on homebound and medical issues. And having people come in and out of the house, so those issues like that will be taken on a case-by-case basis. Uh related services such as, those are O T P T speech. Uh where we are in phase one, when schools are closed, those services will be um remote as well. In phase two, when we're A day, B day, and that remote day, if you are in H C S at home. There is a possibility that you can receive services on campus or you can receive your services remotely. I just let you know, if we, we have inclusion classes, we are doing a push to inclusion this year. Uh we want our kids in classes with our X Ed teachers. That's our goal, is to provide as much services as we possibly can in the class. It works best for the kids, they get the support that they need. So keep in mind that even if we are doing a remote, um if we are doing remote learning. If that teacher is in an inclusion spot in that class, that teacher will be in that class remotely as well. So that does not change, if I'm going to be in Mrs. Mobley's class for math on an A day while we're on campus. If we're not on campus, I'm gonna be in Miss Mobley's class remotely. So keep in mind that those inclusion services will be provided. In phase three, uh with H C S at home, you receive services on campus or services remotely. And again, I I just wanna stress that everything is an I E P team decision, everything is individualized. We are more than happy to work on a case-by-case basis. Um and to make, you know, whatever we need to do, that's in the best interest for the student. And of course, if we are, all schools open, uh we're good. But you will still be, if you choose H C S at home, you will still be doing your services remotely. Um until the semester or until things change. Um you do have my email, because I know all these cases for X Ed students are so individualized. Feel free to reach out to me and I'll be happy to answer any email questions. If I don't have an answer, I'll get back to you with it. But um please feel free to reach out, because we wanna make sure that our X Ed students are getting the services that they need. And provided in a way that will help them be successful in class, either at home or in school. And I think that's it, yeah.
Thank you, now we will have dress code, Chromebooks and school supplies uh from Ms. Laura Hamilton, our assistant principal.
Hello, everybody, uh we're glad that you're here. So um the first thing that I'm gonna address are, is the dress code for option one. When you're attending school in person. Um the dress code is basically gonna be the same. You uh would wear twill pants that are tan, navy and black. And all items have to be size-appropriate, so no leggings or sagging, so not too little, not too um loose. Then shirts must have a collar and buttons at the neck, for example, a golf-style shirt or a button down. And it doesn't have any rotting or pictures. Um school-sponsored shirts are allowed, and so those are things that will be talked about in school. Uh sometimes sports ha- have specific shirts, sometimes we sell shirts uh or sweatshirts or hoodies. And those things are allowed, if we've uh, we kind of let you know as you go about what's allowed there. And then shorts or skirts are not allowed, they haven't been allowed for some time. With the exception, if you have a religious uh belief that does not allow you to wear pants. Then you could wear a skirt that's to the knee or below. And no matter whether you are in person or online for your instruction. Uh you should not come to any educational setting with clothing or accessories that identify yourselves or your student as belonging to or being affiliated with a non-school-sponsored group. Uh especially displaying illegal contraband or inappropriate items or head coverings. For example, hats, headwear, hair bonnets, uh shower caps, wrap scarves, headbands can be worn. If they're the little thin ones that go over your head, sunglasses, do-rags, bandanas, gloves and blankets. So in matters of the dress code, as normal, if there's some discussion and there's some opinion involved. The decision of the school will prevail. Um we do reserve the right, we very seldom change the dress code once we've got it set. However, sometimes things do arise during the middle of the year and so we have to uh adjust things. And that might be especially true this year, but we will definitely try not to. We wanna keep things as consistent for you as parents as we can um for the dress code. So the part that changes is this, we do have some modifications that are due to COVID. So every day, a student should wear a mask, you heard that. So a lot of people wear these kind of blue and white, and those are fine, you can wear one of those. I have a picture on the slideshow of a mask like what I have right now. So uh this is just a solid kind of tube uh scarf. And it's actually incredibly comfortable and you can just pull it up when you need to. And um pull it down during the times that you can, it's easy, cuz I've enjoyed having it, because I don't lose it. I just pull it down when I don't need it and then I pull it up when I do need it. So another issue for this year is because of safety and health considerations, we will not be issuing lockers. If you've ever been at school, when we're getting in and out of lockers, there's no way to keep any kind of safety and distance. So we will not have lockers, so we are recommending that students bring backpacks. And they must be transparent or see-through. There's a good selection of options and actually some really cute ones on Amazon and Walmart. And uh so you might wanna check those out, I would recommend kind of jumping on that if uh if you're wanting to do that. Because students will need to carry their belongings from class to class. And the backpack would make that easier. For coats and jackets, it's not usually an issue right now when it's a hundred degrees outside. But as it gets cooler, uh students will be wearing jackets. And so if possible, we're asking them to put them in their backpacks. But we know that sometimes, especially as it gets colder, it may be a little too big. So we will come up with a plan for how to do that, we might put some hooks somewhere. Or have students put it on the back of the chair, but we'll work with the students about exactly what to do with that. And then headwear, once you come into the building, uh you just put it in your backpack. And then all personal electronic devices must be in the backpack and turned off, especially like cell phones. Normally, they would be in your walker, but since you don't have a walker, you need to keep it turned off and in your backpack. So that it is not interfering with the uh classroom learning environment. And then the mask issue, I just restated this um thing from the slide from the district. Because we are just following the guidelines of the district and uh the CDC and the Health Department. For doing everything we can to help keep all of us healthy where we can be in school. Okay, so the next thing is the school-wide supply list, to simplify things, we have uh um established a school-wide supply list. There is a chance, once you get into class, and again, this would be a supply list for option one in person. Even though these things would be beneficial, even with H C S at home, uh at least several of these things would be. So you've gotta have your mask. And so much of our learning is done through online programs now, and some of them could be videos. So we recommend that you have a little pair of earbuds or earphones, they don't have to be anything fancy, they can be the dollar ones from the Dollar Tree. But that, that will come into uh benefit for your student. And then pencil box or pencil bag, as I said, we have to, they'll be carrying their things around. So it's more convenient if they have a pencil box or a little pencil bag where they have their pencils, colored pencils. Uh whatever supplies, calculator if they have one, uh just right there, and it's easier to get their stuff in and out and it doesn't get lost. And then their pencils and colored pencils and then notebook paper and then two composition notebooks. So I have a picture here of what we're talking about when we mean the composition notebooks. Uh I know at least one of those is used in science for their interactive notebooks. And they're also used very often in uh E L A classes for, as a notebook. And then the clear or see-through backpack, so this is a picture of one. But they have some that are like tinted pink or green or blue, so you can be a little creative if you're interested in that. Um let's see if there's anything else here, there is a chance, I may have already stated it. That individual teachers may require some small additional supplies once the year starts. But um they'll just let you know what that is, we're very fortunate that we're a toddler in school. And so we're able to supply a lot of those things, but there may be some uh small supplies that they're gonna need at the beginning for a particular class. And then again, students will keep all of their stuff with them. Uh on the dress code thing, uh this dress code was about the, kinda back to that, just dawned on me. That we're talking about the dress code for in-class, so if you're in H C S at home. Uh we're gonna be, we will be giving you further guidance about what uh requirements might be for that. Of course, the, there's a chance. Of course, the, there's a chance that the dress code might be a little different for that. Uh, but we do still want to uh keep a protected environment for that learning time when you're in a Zoom, and we're going to talk about that in just a minute. Okay, so then I am, the supply list that was on the first page are the things that you need, and then these are some optional items. Some students prefer to write with markers because they're more vivid. So if your student feels that way, you might want to get them a pack of markers. And then we use this TI thirty XS uh solar, side to calculator at school. We will supply your student with a calculator and we will be sanitizing them uh in between any use. If there's any time that somebody's going to have to share a calculator, we're going to do our very best to keep everybody with their own. But if you're just wanting to make sure you're like, I don't want my, I'm not going to take any chances, then then I recommend you get one of these. They're usually somewhere between ten and uh twenty dollars. And then I would say make sure you write your student's name on the back since uh since it will look a lot like the one we use. The reason we've been, we kind of encourage you to get the same one that we use is because teachers are actually teaching the kids exactly which buttons to push, and it's easier for students if they use the same calculator. Um, years, several years ago, we changed so that every teacher in math uses the same calculator just so kids aren't relearning and relearning the process. So that's why we recommend this specific one. And then there's a wish list. So uh, these things, there's not really a fund normally for uh these things to be purchased. And so if you want to contribute to your classes um supplies, then you know, the teachers would greatly appreciate a roll of paper towels, a box of Kleenex, maybe some sticky notes. If you can find some Clorox wipes or Lysol or hand sanitizer, you might be the teacher's favorite uh pet, just for bringing those in. But uh, you might also want to let us all know where you found them, because we're not sure uh where they are. So these things are just kind of a bonus if you want to go above and beyond and help your teachers out. Okay, so the Chromebooks, we are a one-to-one school, so all students will have a device. So there were some students uh who, for some reason or another, did not turn their device in at the end of last year. And so if they did not turn it in, those students, that device is their assigned device. So they will just have to bring it into school and they will have to use it. Or if they're on HCS at home, they will use that device for their HCS at home. Uh, or the virtual school. That would be true for them as well. Yeah, all students who did turn them in or are upcoming sixth grade students or students that are just new to our school will be assigned a new Chromebook within the first few days of school. Mr. Archer takes care of this and he is phenomenal at keeping up with who has a Chromebook, what Chromebook they have, taking care of the issues. And so he will be getting uh one of your children's best friends as far as keeping a Chromebook and keeping it in working order. Uh, the expectations uh for your Chromebooks, we still expect students when they're online for class to conduct themselves as if they were in person. So this is somewhere you can help your student. And so if you like encourage them and hold them accountable. So if your student would not say it in person in front of a teacher, they should not be using the computer to communicate it. Um, there is a tracking device on the computer so that if they're doing anything that's of concern, that gets sent to the school and we will be contacting you um about that if if that happens. And then following protocols for online etiquette. So there is going to be a training at the beginning of the school year for all students. It may happen on that Wednesday or the Friday of the orientation week just to help uh students and even parents about what are the expectations of how, you know, let's set up a station. You'll notice here I have just a plain wall with my map behind me, so nobody's walking behind me. I'm in regular clothes that uh anybody would be comfortable to see me in. And so we, we want students to be doing that as well whenever they're in Zoom meetings. And then the process for pickup, uh, they'll be uh issued during homeroom. Uh, the first week of school, again, that's for the in-person students. And then for the HCS at home students, we're going to have a separate Chromebook pickup day. The details are to come. We will communicate with you. So be checking your emails about what day to do that. It may be before that August twelfth date, so you can come in when uh not so many students are in the building, since you chose to be in an environment uh where you didn't feel comfortable being in the school. We're going to try to honor that for you. Okay, that's the end of me.
Thank you. Transportation behavior expectations and procedures. Mr. Arnold.
Uh, yeah, go ahead and click to the next slide, please.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so really this only applies to those students that will be, will be coming to school. So those are really just the students that choose option one. Um. If you're going to be riding, I'm kind of going to go backwards. If you're going to be a car rider, we need to make sure that parents are um checking symptoms of their students prior to even coming to school. So please check to make sure they're not running a fever. Check their temperature. If they're showing any symptoms of the virus, um, we ask that you keep them home. Um, also, when students do arrive by car, um, they need to make sure they put their mask on as soon as they get out of the car. Bus riders, they'll be required to wear a mask when they um board the bus. If they don't have one, the bus drivers will have some with them. Um, if our district goes to phase two, those students that will are option one students, those that are coming to campus, they will be divided up in groups A and group B, um, which has been discussed before, um, each group coming two days a week. Uh, if you go on to the uh next slide, please. Um, our policies for uh behavior, we're still pretty much going by the same policies that were last year. We haven't gotten the updated uh copy of the code of acceptable behavior, uh, but we should be getting that pretty soon. Um, but one big difference this year is that students are required to wear masks. If they, if they don't wear their masks, they will be reminded to wear their mask. Um, if they don't, there will be a consequence. And if they continue not to, then they will be asked to uh start the Hammond County Schools at Home program. Um, that way they will learn from home. Um, we've also, um, we're starting to work on some uh procedures within the building to make sure students are uh socially distant from each other. Um, one example is um lunch will take place in the classroom and not in the cafeteria as a big, huge group of students. So students will be in their classroom with their cohort. Um, another example is when students change classes from teacher to teacher, we'll only have one class in the hall, uh, in the hall at a time. So we're kind of working out the procedures for, to make sure that students are keeping their distance. Um, I believe that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we have Coach Oliver, Dean of Students, Athletic Director. He's going to talk about um the status right now of our athletics and great orientation.
Good evening, everyone. If you could hit the next slide. So Hamilton County follows uh the recommendations from the T double S double A. And as of right now, they are still waiting to do a vote on high school football, and they have a semi-plan set up for high school. Uh, the problem with Hamilton County is our middle school program does something opposite of every other county in Tennessee. So what the middle school is going on right now is Hamilton County's um advice and recommendations that they've go, they're going on. Uh, those have not been set forth. Those should be coming in the next week, but as of right now, there are no middle school sports until further notice. Um, now, uh, as Mr. Drake pointed out earlier, if you do option one or option two, the student wants sports resume, those students will be allowed to participate in whatever activity we have at the school. Uh, if they are in option three, again, they will not be able to participate in our school's sports. Um, but again, once athletics resume, a student needs to make sure and go get a physical from a doctor. Um, and it has to be postdated of April fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, you cannot have a physical for uh be before that date. Um, then we will also have pre and post-practice procedures, um, that's wearing masks beforehand, taking temperature checks and so on. Um, pretty similar to what we'll be doing at the school. Uh, next, please. Uh, as far as Camp Pioneer goes, that is our sixth grade orientation. Obviously, it will not be taking place in person this year. Uh, Ms. Gravenkemper, who is our other guidance counselor, has been leading the case for this whole program and has set up everything. And and I hate that she's not being able to do it in person, but she has literally taken everything and put it onto a Google Classroom. Uh, an email should have gone out to all the parents. If you have not received the email, uh, which contains the Google Classroom code that you'd use to get into that class. Um, at the bottom, you can see her email, and you can also see my email. So again, if you have not received that email, you can shoot it to us and we can get that information for you so you can participate in this uh sixth grade orientation. Uh, to go along with that, we will also be holding some teacher-student Zoom meetings. Um, these will be Q and A uh opportunities for students to ask questions for how the school year will like. Um, I'm really trying to set it up for it's being mainly just students and teachers. Um, and we will have a parent administration Zoom meeting where parents can ask those questions at a later date. And that is it.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Owen. She is our lead school counselor. She will speak to us how to get registered, and we have to get it done by July twenty second, tomorrow. Okay, go for it.
All right, next slide, please. All right, so well, we have a few things that we need you to do right now within the parent portal. Like Ms. Drake mentioned, um, the most important kind of pressing issue that we have is all families at East Ridge Middle School need to log within their parent portal and register for either option one, two, or three, as we discussed earlier. Um, if you are option one and you are in-person learning at school, there's been a little confusion about if you need to go in and register for that. We are asking that you go into your parent portal and input option one. We're working really hard on schedules and creating our classes, and we really just need to know what our parents' choices are. Um, secondly, if you are the HCS at home option, this is sort of the pressing issue right now. Need to register by the end of the day tomorrow, July twenty second. If you have any issues getting into your parent portal account, it's, um, if you could email me at Owen underscore K at hcd.org. I prefer that over um calling because that way I can send you your login information and different things. But I will also be at the school tomorrow between seven thirty and twelve thirty and can help you with any login information. Um, in order to um do the online learning options, you would go under forms in your parent portal. And it's a pretty easy process once you're in. Typically, the hardest part's getting into the portal. Um, and oftentimes, our parents are logging in with a student account. Um, just because in the past, we sometimes gave that before online registration. So I recommend now, um, if you are using a student account to move to a parent account, and I can help you get all that taken care of. And it's a great way throughout the school year to log in and have all of your students on one account, check grades, look at different things, um, and be able to email um teachers if needed. So that is a great, I apologize, sorry, some at-home noise going on. And as well as the third option, virtual school, um, again, we kind of are suggesting against that. But those are two learning options. So you need to do that by tomorrow, and if you have any questions, um, please email or call me and I can answer that. If you can move to the next slide. The second part that we need done is um online registration. Registration is typically done on registration day um with a paper packet, but last year, Hamilton County Schools moved to online, and it was a really great process. Um, last year was a little bumpy, but this year should be much easier. If you registered online last year, it's very simple. You would just go to the, on the left side on the navigation screen, you would just go to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one returning student registration. All of your information should be uploaded there, and you should just be able to simply make those small changes that you might have from last year. Um, awesome, excuse me one second. I apologize for that. Um, and so what we're talking about registration day, there is a large possibility that we will move that to virtual this year. Um, I highly encourage you to be checking your emails, anything you get from Hamilton County, Ms. Drake or myself, be paying attention to because we'll be pushing a lot of information out through that as well as in the school year. Um, it's probably more so this year than any other year that we have the right phone numbers and email addresses and different things because we will, um, there's a good possibility we'll be moving between the four phases throughout the school year and kind of getting in touch with you virtually is even more so important. If you have any questions about the online registration, you can also email me. We um are getting people in and we want to make sure that your family chooses what works best for you. So any questions in regards to that, please email or call me, and thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we're at the end. Um, but right now, before we get to, well, I'm going to get to the end, and what we're going to do, Ms. Rivera, okay, we're going to get to the end, we're going to answer some questions, but then I want you to hang on for our Spanish speaking um parents and go through our everything again, okay? Yeah, I'm just kidding, okay? But you know, just to go through it, okay? Okay, uh, I want to encourage you. Um, right now, it's tough, it's hard, it's it's nothing that we have seen before. But uh, we're family and we're going to stick together. We're going to move together. We're better together. Uh, we're going to do this. Uh, we're going to um we're going to keep the communication lines open. That is key. Um, we're going to um honor the uh safety pledge. We're going to, if we're sick, and that goes for all of us, you know, if if Ms. Drake is got a headache, got a sore throat, um, I'm going, I'm going to work now, you know me, I'm I'm working, but I'm working from home. I'm not going to come in, um, I'm not going to, I'm not going to come in with um whatever that I have. I'm going to get checked out, um, get a clean um bill of health, and I'm going to come to work after that. But we um are still going to move forward, and we can do this. We're in the age of technology. And when we have a a virus, oh, no, we're going to beat it, okay? The vaccine's coming along. We just got to wait on it. But until then, we're going to keep it moving, keep it moving forward. If that is HCS at home, HCS at home. If it is here um in person, it's here in person. I'm not even going to talk about um option three because